Stairs on the right, left, and center aisles. And we ask that you use caution when using the stairs. There is also a ramp located to the audience's left. If anyone has written comments, exhibits, petitions, photos, or letters they intend to present at today's meeting, have 17 copies and give them to a staff member at the back of the auditorium. Staff member, please hold up your hand for the audience. If you do not have 17 copies, you may use the overhead camera to present your documents. Please place your documents on the podium and line it up with the arrows indicated. If you want your documentation to go on record, you must hand them to the clerk after your presentation with the agenda item number clearly marked on the documentation. Members of the public cannot speak to staff members that are seated at the tables with microphones during the meeting. If you have questions, please see the staff member located in the back of the auditorium. All speakers will be limited to two minutes to make their presentation statements. Everyone, please turn off all cell phones or place them on vibrate during the meeting. If you must take a call, please leave the meeting area and go outside to have your conversation. We also ask the audience to refrain from talking with one another during the presentations and discussions. Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and then forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Everyone attending the meeting is asked to remember that the administrative building and campus are tobacco-free areas, which means no smoking is allowed from curb to curb. No food or drinks are allowed in the auditorium except for bottled water. If there are any items remaining on the agenda, the Commission will break for lunch for one hour per the chairman's discretion.
Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and then forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. The items with the recommendation made by the Commission today will be heard by the Board of Supervisors on Monday, April 1st, 2019, 9:30 a.m. in the same location, with the exception of any items that are continued today. First of all, today I need a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February 13th.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from last month.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Abbott and a second by Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. First, next item today is the call to the public. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address the Commission on an item unrelated to the agenda today, you're welcome to come to the podium. We cannot address those comments, but we are here to listen. If there's anyone here, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the call to the public and move on to the first item on our agenda
Item number one is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit for Assessor Parcel Number 40232082 to allow for a billboard in a C2H highway commercial zone in the Beaver Dam vicinity. We discussed this item at the meeting on February 14th, 2019, and continued it to the next meeting or today's meeting because of pending litigation that could affect the outcome of the special use permit. The pending litigation was heard on February 19th, and it appears that an injunction was placed on the stegian properties, or stegian property. Staff is recommending that we table this item until the trial or the settlement of the case. And we have our attorney, Bob Taylor, here to answer any questions that you might have as well. This item also was starred for executive session if you need to go into an executive session.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor, would you like to give us a brief update here today? This was tabled last time from some pending litigation, so an update today if you would.
Thank you, Chairman Gordon. This item involves a preliminary injunction. Now, that's a more durable injunction. The last, at the last meeting, there was a temporary restraining order imposed until a more thorough hearing could be held regarding the merits of the case. We're not a party to the case or anything like that. The court did issue a preliminary injunction, which lasts until either a settlement of the case or a trial on the matter. And in doing so, the court found that there would be irreparable harm to the person who requested the injunction. Again, the injunction is not binding on the county. It applies to the parties to the lawsuit. But, you know, it boils down to the stegian property is enjoined now. The court has prohibited stegian property from proceeding with this until the case can be resolved. So it would be my recommendation that we table this until either the case is resolved or the injunction otherwise lifted.
Thank you. So we do have the option to go into executive session?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is it appropriate or that the applicant be talked to? And would he, on normal circumstances, withdraw this until a later date himself?
I am surprised that the applicant hasn't voluntarily withdrawn this because the court order prohibits him from proceeding, prohibits the applicant from proceeding.
Thank you.
Gotcha. Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question on the document we have in the packet. The, trying to see what it is. It, the, doesn't say what it is, but it must be the injunction itself?
Yes.
The order. The very last sentence after they excuse Mr. Goldberg, the finally, the parties are, can you explain, is that relevant to what we're doing today?
It's not really relevant. That's something that the court requires from one of the parties before the suit. A form of order typically when the court enters in a judgment or an order on behalf of a party's motion, it will request that the party, you know, draft and lodge an order in the form consistent with what the court has ordered. That way, the party has some input into it. The other side gets an opportunity to respond. It really doesn't impact us and...
So the fact that that was not done doesn't negate anything or change anything, basically?
No, the injunction is still, the court could have denied the injunction because the parties hadn't submitted requested orders if it wanted to do so. It didn't do that. It implied, it applied the injunction, then admonished the party that the party owes the court, you know, a draft of an order.
Okay, thank you.
First of all, is the applicant present today? I didn't think so. Okay. So like I was saying, we have an option to go into executive session, but we also have a recommendation by staff to table this item for 30 days. I'll entertain a motion for...
Commissioner?
Yes?
My recommendation would be that we table this until the injunction is lifted.
Okay.
Either through a resolution of the case, a settlement by the parties, or, you know, a reconsideration by the court, but until the injunction is lifted.
Understood. Okay. So the recommendation by staff is to table until the injunction is lifted. If anybody feels like we need to talk about that more with staff or council, we certainly can adjourn to executive session. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion or further discussion on this item at this time.
I'll make a motion to table this until the injunction's lifted or we hear otherwise.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Walker and a second by Commissioner Beller to table this until it's lifted or we hear further, any other discussion on this item? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is tabled.
Chair, can we have a second on that?
We had a second by Commissioner Beller.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, thank you. Item number two?
Item number two is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit for Assessor Parcel Number 11006248 to allow for equestrian boarding up to eight horses in an AR agricultural residential zone in the Lake Havasu vicinity. We've received seven letters in opposition, and I believe you have those in your packets. The applicant plans on removing the manufactured home to the south and adding a covered horse shade and a horse turnout arena. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions and with the condition that the equestrian boarding is up to eight horses.
Okay, thank you. First of all, is the applicant present for this item?
Yes.
Would you like to address the Commission? Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
If you can do this, sorry, not very good. My name is Jennifer Michet. My address is 4041 Littlefinger Road, Lake Havasu City, Arizona, 86406. I would first like to take the opportunity to thank you for letting me speak. I am the one who applied for the permit. The surrounding land uses in Horizon Six consist of single-family residential with current horse privileges. By obtaining this special use permit, I am allowing regulations to be set on the number of horses that are able to be boarded on my property. Currently, residences in the area do board horses, but they, if asked, they claim that they are theirs. Once I am approved for this special use permit, I will be obtaining three additional permits from the county, all of which will meet Mojave County Building Codes. The first, as we already mentioned, is to demolish and remove the single-wide mobile at the south end of the property. I'm also going to be upgrading the electrical permit, and I'm going to get the electrical panel and get a permit for the shade structure for the horses. I do acknowledge that no special events are to be held on my property under this special use permit. My reason for obtaining this permit, it's simple. I just want to do things the right way. Like I said earlier, people in the neighborhood, they already board horses, and like I said, they tell people that they're horses if asked. And I have a 12-year-old daughter, and I don't want to put her in the position of having to lie to people that those are all of our horses. I want her to be able to have friends board there that she can easily ride with, that we don't have to arrange and have meeting times and stuff like that. I just want everything to be legit. And I have discussed this special use permit with my neighbors. I am aware that I have one neighbor in particular who has gone to all the other neighbors, and he is the third acre up from my property, so he is at 290 feet. So he is just, makes the 300-foot mark. His concern is an increase in flies, an increase in traffic, an increase in noise, and an increase in dust. Again, I recognize his concerns. However, there's approximately 20 horses that I can view from my property at neighboring properties. And for the flies, of course, I'll keep a lid on a dumpster. For the dust, I'm planning on installing sprinklers to keep the dust down in the arena. With the noise and the traffic, again, he is to the east of my property, and access comes mainly from the west. So they would hit my property before they reach his. Again, I'm willing to work with the county on this approval process. I don't feel that I'm asking for anything that isn't already being done by others in the Horizon Six community. I'm just asking for permission to do it honestly and legally.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Stay here one second. Does anybody in the Commission have any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
I have a couple.
Mr. Abbott?
I drove by that property last week. I think I drove by. I was looking for it, and I, from this picture of that mobile home, I'm pretty sure it was. What is the situation there for water? I have two questions. And what do you plan on doing for building as far as shade or stables or like that for the horses?
Yep. So we are on Lake Havasu City water.
That's good.
And then the single-wide down at the bottom, that will be removed.
You said that earlier.
The arena will be more towards the front of the property, and the shade structure will be more towards the back where the hill went up to the single-family residence at the top. And we're going to have engineered plans for a metal shade structure. Does that answer your question?
Is that anything the staff has to approve?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Abbott, with the approval, we require that they meet all of our conditions set forth in Section 37N, which is our site plan requirements. So they would have to provide us a site plan showing that they meet our setbacks and ingress to, and egress to the property, as well as if any parking would be required. They would also have to apply for building permits for the shade structure if it's above 300 square feet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I have one, I guess. Do you and your family live on the property and the residents in the back?
We do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have two people that signed up to speak on this item. I'll call them up at this time. First, Mary Van Roy. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Mary Van Roy, address is 4034 Blue Canyon Road, Lake Havasu City. And I am a long-term resident of Donkey Acres, also known as Horizon Six Improvement District. And I am for supporting this. I got my letter because I'm within the range that they had to send the letters out to. And I just met Jennifer for the first time this morning. Even though, I guess, we were kind of neighbors, we hadn't run into each other before. And I support it because we have, actually, I'll do a quote from one of our supervisors, actually, my supervisor. Donkey Acres has traditionally been known for its equestrian charm. We actually have state lands bordering our community and then BLM lands. And their location on Littlefinger is the best for riding out from because they have a widest shoulder, the only flat shoulder that's safe and to ride horses on, and they also have a big wash there. So you go up that half-mile, and then you hit the state land trust area, and we all get our permits for state land trust to ride horses on there, which is a good use for state lands. And we did get a trail put in about two or three years ago that we had a grant from state parks for that trail that cuts through the half-mile of our community, and then we have one-mile streets. Interesting history about Donkey Acres Horizon Six Improvement District is that it was there before Lake Havasu City, and it's always been an equestrian-type community. And I know the girls I ride with, we're all very responsible and have dumpsters, pick up our manure, and we use fly bait and things so we don't have a problem with flies. And I can't say that I've ever heard any complaints. My horses only there for the season because they're from the Spruce Dale Guest Ranch, and so they work in the White Mountains at the Dude Ranch for the summers. And so we are not always around for the summer because it's a little warm. So I'd say that we have a wonderful community for horses and that children and her daughter, who's 12-years-old, who I just met today, we need to give everybody the opportunity to be involved with horses because it's a very good thing. Because we're an improvement district, we had to get petitions, like, I think, almost 30-years ago now or more, to get water from Lake Havasu City, and the people had to pay for it themselves. And then I know I was involved 20-some-years ago with getting the petition signed that we, as homeowners, paid for the blacktop because it used to be dirt roads. So we're a very responsible community. And the riding out in the desert is just so fantastic that I think everybody should have that opportunity. And I totally support anyone who does get a permit legally and does the right thing for the horses and for the community. So I totally support it, and I hope that they do get their permit. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for the background on that portion of Lake Havasu City. I appreciate it. Second, Kathy Shaw. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Kathy Shaw. I live at 4047 Littlefinger Road, Lake Havasu, Arizona, 86406. Like has been said before, we live in a really neat rural agriculture residential neighborhood. It is, I think, the most special place in Lake Havasu. But just like that, it's very rural, it's horse community, it's families. We already have a business at the top of our street that was grandfathered in by the same applicants, and now another business on our street. It's too many businesses. I really, we have horses, all, the whole street has less than eight horses. And so they want to put eight horses on one property, and there isn't even eight horses on the mile-long street. You know, we are entitled or permitted to have horses and goats and chickens and, of course, donkeys for our own use, for us to ride, for, to, you know, enjoy. But to bring in boarders means bringing in all that traffic, and I don't know if you're familiar with how much care horses need. At least twice a day, there will be eight people driving in to take care of their horses and driving out and then coming back. And in the summer, it's even more important that they come several times to make sure that the horses are not being, you know, they've got their ointments for their eyes and their misters are on to keep them cool. And that turns our beautiful rural street into a business, into a business zone where we have people and coming all hours of the day and night. Also in the summer, a good time to take care of your horses is like 4:30 in the morning. Not a big problem when you walk outside your house and do it. It's a problem when trucks come at four. And like they say, there are people that board, friends and neighbors or, you know, friends and relatives' horses in our community. It's not that big of a deal, but for having a business of eight horses advertising for, you know, it just, it, to me, it's ruining our little tiny community, our special community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're okay.
I have a question for the applicant, Chairman.
Yeah. Thank you, Kathy. Would the applicant please come back up?
No, no, no. I'm sorry for the lady that's there.
For the speaker? Okay.
For Kathy.
Hey, that's me.
Do you have a homeowners association that says you can have horses or you can't?
We are zoned for horses. We are agriculturally residential zoned. We are permitted to have horses, chickens, and of course, donkeys. Don't forget, donkeys.
Is there a limit to how many you can have?
I am not aware of a limit, but I am sure there is a limit. I know that it's recommended that you only have, like, one horse an acre. I know that seems a little, I mean, because horses are herd animals, there should be at least two. So I don't really know the numbers on that, but I'm sure there is a limit. It would make sense.
Thank you. Staff, is that a question you can answer in terms of the amount of horses, donkeys, animals that are allowed on these properties?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, the zoning ordinance does not set a limit on how many horses or chickens a private property owner can own on their parcel. We do have nuisance ordinances, so if there's an odor or smell or something like that, then we can maybe go and see if there's a violation in that sense, but we do not have a limit on how many horses one could have on their parcel as long as they're zoned properly.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Commissioner?
Can I clarify something?
Yeah, please come back to the podium, and I have a follow-up question for you as well.
I just would like it to be known that between my property and Kathy, her property, there is one donkey and about seven or eight horses just between our properties. So for her to say that there's not even that many on the street, there are.
Okay, thank you.
And like I said before, when you're on my property, you can see behind us, there's horses. All around us, there's horses.
Okay. One second. Commissioner Brule?
My question is, if you're boarding eight horses, will you have eight owners feeding them and the other, Kathy implied that the owners would then be actually caring for them day-to-day?
She's looking at this as an additional business, and I have never once said that I'm going to be advertising. Like I said, I want to do it for the kids, so that means that my daughter and her friends have horses. Does that mean that these girls at 12 and 13-years-old can drive themselves up there and feed their horses? No, my daughter's probably going to have to pick up some of what they're missing. I live on the property. I can take care of what needs to be taken care of if a horse owner is not able to get up there. I'm not expecting there to be eight individual owners. Most people have two horses of their own so that they can ride with a companion. I'm not looking to get eight individual boarders, even though the permit is for eight horses to be boarded.
So horses that are boarded with you just means they have a stable, but you don't provide, you don't feed them and take care of them?
So some people do. So some people just allow a stall space. Other people provide full board, which means that the boarding place feeds, waters, does everything for them. It depends what, who you're getting to come in and board and what services they're needing. If they work and they're not able to get up there two and three times a day, then of course, I'm going to pick up the slack.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one question. In terms of, you have horses yourself?
I do.
So of the, this permit is maxing the capacity at eight horses. Correct me if I'm wrong, staff. So of that, you'll have, how many horses do you currently have?
So currently, I have one of my own, and my daughter has one. So that's two.
So two of the eight are, live on the property already?
Mr. Chairman?
Well, they don't. They don't live there yet. I board her horse, and my horse lives up at the gun store.
Okay. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the property owner can have as many horses as they would like themselves. This special use permit is to only allow up to eight horses to be boarded.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And so that's what I had said earlier, is people in the neighborhood who do board horses, they just claim that they're theirs. So by me applying for a boarding permit, I'm just trying to be honest. I'm just trying to do it the legitimate way so that my 12-year-old isn't put in a position where she has to lie if she's asked.
Understood. Thank you.
Chairman, I have a question to the applicant.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just out of curiosity, what's your second business or your first one?
I own the gun store up at the top of Littlefinger. It has been a gun store since 1964, and it was grandfathered in as the only piece of commercial property in 1967.
But it's separate from your residential property?
It is separate. It is approximately 10 acres up from where I live.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mill?
For the board, bits of information about Donkey Acres Horizon Six. It's a mixed, it's a mixed area, manufactured homes, stick-built houses, acre-plus lots, well-maintained, fantastic views if that's where you want to live. It is not, it is not within the city limits, but it adjoins the city with city backup for your utilities and fire, police, stuff like that.
Yes, thank you.
And on that note, some of the letters that I had to write in my 300 feet were actually across the wash and in, actually, Lake Havasu City, not even zoned agriculture residential. It is people that I had to write letters to that have no horse privileges at all.
Understood. Thank you, yes.
Good.
Thank you. That's it for now. Okay, we're back to the Commission. Any other comments for staff or the applicant or any discussion?
I have a comment.
Commissioner Mill?
You'd be opening up a bag of snakes if you turned this down. You've got a lot of horses out there. Going to be a whole bunch of upset people. Just common sense.
Correct, and I would hope that if there, if this is approved, that it would set a precedent that some of the other folks in Horizon Six that are boarding horses without a permit would come forward and actually come into compliance so it was better regulated.
I have a comment, and I'm also going to make a motion if it's okay. Having seen this and gotten the information that we've heard today, it sounds like she doesn't even have to come to us for this. She could just do it. So it's zoned for horses. It says there's no limit to how many you can have. So I see nothing wrong with this request, and I would make a motion to approve for staff recommendation.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Abbott, a second by Commissioner Beller. Any other comment on this item or discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Item three. Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Item three.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm going to have to ask to recuse myself on this.
Okay. For the record, Commissioner Morris is recusing himself from this item.
Item number three is an evaluation of a request for a renewal of a special use permit for a cottage industry for Assessor Parcel Number 22536022C to allow for the sale of vegetables, hay, and livestock feed in the public, to the public in an AR agricultural residential zone in the South Mojave Valley vicinity. Staff recommends approval with the conditions that the, that they're in compliance with the conditions set forth by Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2016034 and that this renewal will be in effect until April 1st of 2021.
Thank you. Is the applicant present?
I'm representing the applicant.
Are you Gail Borch?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to speak?
Yes.
Please come forward.
My name is Gail Borch. I work for Victor and Julie Wakamoto, Wakamoto Farms. I'd like to thank the staff for recommending that our special use permit be renewed. And I'm hopeful that all of you will adhere to their recommendation. We've just planted our first set of sweet corn, which should harvest beginning of June, and we're looking forward to a banner year of hay and Bermuda seed. I'd like to thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And would you state your address for the record?
8061 Evergreen Drive, Mojave Valley, Arizona, 86440.
Thank you.
Thank you. Y'all have a good day.
Okay, at this point, I'll open it up to the commission for any comments or discussion.
I just had a question for staff. I was curious why, because I know that operation. I've got vegetables and stuff there. It's a fine place to go to and buy food. Why are you, are just giving them an extension until April of 2021? Is that all they're asking for?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Abbott, we want to, we wanted to make sure that they continue to stay in, in compliance with, with our requirements as far as lot storage and, and anything else that's set forth in the cottage industry before we extended the amount of time for renewal. The commission is, is able to set forth a different timeframe if, if you'd like, or recommend a different timeframe if you'd like. This is what staff has agreed upon to make sure that they continue to stay in compliance with our, our regulations.
Then I guess I'd like to ask the applicant, what would they like?
We would like to continue doing business without having to renew every three years, of course. But if to stay in compliance, we need to renew every three years, we would. We just want to do what's right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is this, staff, is this typical timeline for an extension of a special use permit? Or are they all different?
I think it depends on the situation. And I think on most, most extensions that we have given in the past are typically anywhere from one to three years. And I believe this one would be for two years.
Okay.
Why, why ask? Just a couple of months ago, we had something before us for this lady that I have visited her place a number of times. It's like for a pet sanctuary and we, we gave her more than she was asking for. And I, I just see this as being one of those, give them a permit to do that until there's a problem. But what's before us, you know, I certainly have no problem with saying yes to what's before us.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Abbott, on some of the, the ones for the kennel permits that we had, said there was no renewal date for the, for the special use permit, they had already come back three or, two or three times. And so they had not had any issues or, or non-compliances with us. And so we figured that they were doing well and we did not need to set a renewal date for the special use permit. This would be the first renewal for this operation. And so we just wanted to continue to make sure that they stay within our guidelines.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Walker and a second by Commissioner Kelly. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you. Y'all have a great day.
You as well. Item number four.
Item number four is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor Parcel Number 30666027 from an AR 36A agricultural residential 36-acre minimum lot-sized zone to an AR 15A agricultural residential 15-acre minimum lot-sized zone to allow for a minor land division in the Golden Valley vicinity. The applicant is seeking to split the property into two parcels. We've received one letter in opposition. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. Is the applicant present for this item? No, seeing none. I do have one speaker signed up, Mr. Jim Verhasselt. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Jim Verhasselt. My address is 1540 South Laguna. And I kind of question this land, this split is because they need, they have two trailers on a trailer. The property is only allowed to have one. So they're trying to get around getting rid of one of the trailers or building a building by splitting it. And this is a site that was a former animal rescue. When we bought our property, it had just, the, the, they had just canceled their permits and eliminated it. And two weeks ago, there were dozens of animals, horses, donkeys, goats, chickens, turkeys. Well, today, there's none of them. There's only dogs. So I really think that perhaps this is more than meets the eye. And we've had huge problems with flies and stuff in the past that we didn't have before in the two years we've been in the property here, a year and a half. I'm not sure exactly how long. I don't think it's what they say it is. And I just find it interesting that all the animals have disappeared. Where did they go? And why are they gone? Like after notice came out, must have been when they disappeared. And I figuring that somebody would drive by and look, perhaps some of you supervisors. I don't know. So...
Okay.
That's all I really have to say. I mean, I don't know. It's, it's less than a pleasant neighbor with all these animals and the smell and everything else that's come with it. And I realize it. So I guess that's all I really have to say.
Okay. And you live where in relation to the property in question?
I'm the next-door neighbor on the, well, toward Bolsa. So I think that would be south, but I'm not sure. I'm the nearest neighbor.
Just down Laguna Road from the property?
Correct. Closer to Bolsa. So I'm closer back toward the main road.
Okay.
And there aren't a lot of other neighbors. I don't know how many people they sent letters to, but the house across the street, I believe the gentleman died. It's vacant. I don't know how many other houses were even within the 300-yard range.
Okay.
That I'm not sure about.
Thank you. Any other questions for this gentleman? Yes?
Thank you. My question is, is this the property that we had before the commission a year and a half ago or so that there was health and safety violations with some of the buildings there?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Beller, you're, you're correct. That's, this was the Ruff property. They had an animal sanction, sanctuary or a rescue for dogs and cats. And yeah, they, they were shut down as well as I believe the, the building department had condemned the building. So...
And they removed those?
I, I'm not familiar with that.
Yes, they were removed. They were removed after we bought the property because we had the same company remove a trailer that came with our property that we didn't want. Yeah, they removed everything that was there. I think there was a trailer and there may have also been a shed or two. I don't know. They took out everything that was there. They cleaned it up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead. Commissioner Jacks?
So a question on, historically, you're looking at the map, it looks, had a lot of those other properties been a larger size at one time and then had been historic or you've rezoned over the years? I mean, it appears that way. I was just kind of wondering.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Jacks, as you can see on the map, that there are several parcels that are a lot less, less in size and density. This is one of the larger parcels. I would have to look at a, a map to tell you when they were rezoned or split. I'm assuming a lot of the, the parcels to the west were done quite some time ago. But this one is one of the larger ones. And, and when we look at rezoning the property, whether or not it's a density that would be allowed for the, the surrounding zoning, we take in, in consideration all the properties around it and whether or not this is considered spot zoning where we're creating a new zone or density that would not necessarily meet the, the densities or lot sizes in the surrounding vicinity. This one does have quite a few that are a lot smaller in the vicinity.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Commissioner Mill? Brule?
Thanks.
Sorry.
Mr. Holtry, can I ask you, have you read the letter from Mr. Verhasselt, the letter of objection that he submitted, he and his wife?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Brule, I have read it, yes.
Would, what I am seeing is the concerns that he has, I, I'm not sure would be addressed either way by a zoning change. It seems like the concerns that are in this letter have to do with other types of code enforcement? Or am I missing the gist of this?
Commissioner Brule, the, the letter references the two RVs, the two travel trailers. The property is currently in violation with the county. We've sent out a notice that they have to remove one of the trailers. And one of the remedies that our code enforcement gave the property owners was that they could split the parcel and create two parcels so that they would have the ability to have one RV on one side and one RV on the other side. And so that was a remedy that we gave to the applicant if they wanted to go through the rezone processes. And that's what they chose to do. It also describes the animals on, on the property. It's zoned AR, which would allow for all those, those animals on the property if they're privately, privately owned. So we do not have any, wouldn't have any issues or concerns with that. If there are more dogs than four dogs, then that's when a kennel permit would be required. But as far as just the, the donkeys or, I think it describes goats and, and...
Mr. Holtry, would that be the same whether or not this split occurred?
Yes, it would be.
Okay. And the two trailers, so resolving that problem is what they're doing here. Are they able to tap off the same, the same water and septic and so on?
You can have the same water if you have a, a joint well. Septic, you'd have, you can only have one per, you couldn't share your septic across property.
So basically, the, the concerns in this letter are not related necessarily to zoning?
Correct.
Thank you.
I have a question for staff. Do they have two septics there now?
I'm not familiar with what septics they would have.
And they're in violation?
They're in violation for having the two RVs and they're on one parcel. And it very might well be that the septic can accommodate for those two RVs, but you can't have two RVs. You're essentially creating an RV park. So by separating the parcels, then you'll have one RV on each parcel. Each RV would have to have its own septic system. And they would have to go through our permitting process for a temporary RV permit that they would renew annually.
So your recommendation is bringing them in conformus?
Correct.
Would bring them?
Correct.
Yes, Ms. Ballard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do kind of want to point out that the staff offering up the remedy of splitting the lot is something we do have to do legally. That is an alternative that the, that the person who is in violation, who owns the property that's in violation, has available to them. And we, as staff, we cannot keep that from them. We cannot retract that from them.
Sure.
We have to allow them basically the process that's going on before you today, where they come up, they request that particular remedy. You send your, your recommendations onto the board. The board makes a final decision.
Thank you for that clarification. Yeah, I think it's clear based on the comments here and staff's comments that this is a zoning action regarding a lot split. Certainly the density in the split that's proposed, the zoning that's proposed is within compliance with the area. The issues that are being discussed in the letter, in the comments, and certainly have been addressed previously by the county as well, are, are separate from the zoning action that's in front of us. So I think we all understand that pretty well now. Thank you. Any other comments or discussion on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve for staff recommendation.
I'll second it.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Abbott, a second by Commissioner Morris. Any other discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five.
Item number five is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor Parcel Number 21024314A from a CM commercial manufacturing zone to an R1 single-family residential zone to allow for residential use in the Golden Shores vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? I don't have anybody signed up to speak on this item. Does commission, any comments, questions on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve per staff recommendations.
I'll second it.
Thank you. A motion by Commissioner Walker, a second by Commissioner Beller. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item six.
Item number six is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor Parcel Number 32409019 from a C2 1A general commercial 1-acre minimum lot-sized zone to a CMO commercial manufacturing open lot storage zone to allow for a truck and trailer repair facility in the Kingman vicinity. Staff recommend, or, we received one letter in opposition on this item. We've also received one letter in favor as well as one petition with six signatures in favor. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. Is the applicant present?
Yes, sir.
Please state your name and address for the, the record.
Joe Kalas in 4350 North Arizona Street.
Any statement you want to make or background you want to provide?
Um, well, we've been kind of working out of that area for, shoot, roughly about seven years right now. We didn't, didn't know we weren't in compliance just for the fact that when we rented this first building up front before we purchased it, there was repair shops there already. They just did it in a little bit smaller size than what we did. You know, business obviously became successful. And during this time, last year in May, I bought a tow company. Well, actually, I just bought a tow truck, a heavy tow truck and a rollback. And we didn't know how busy it was going to be. So the second, within months that we knew that was busy, I bought... So the second, within months that we knew that was busy, about four acres just down the street from me across the wash, which we came in here, had it rezoned so that we can take all that clutter that's at our place and move it over there. We just didn't realize how quick this, you know, how quick the business was going to grow to where we're, you know, trying to backpedal as fast as we can to clean up and be respectful to our neighbors as fast as possible. So at that point there, so during this time after we rezoned the four acres, we are working with Mojave engineers to do our site plan that we have to submit so we can start fencing. We have that in process. And then, once we're able to do that, then a lot of the clutter can be moved over, over to the storage yard, which where our towing and our transport company will eventually be. And then we'll be able to only have the stuff that we're actually working on or customers that come to our shop on the property at 4350 North Arizona Street.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment.
Commissioner Abbott?
Looks to me like you've got a going, very good business there.
Eight years ago, or nine years ago, I didn't even have a job. So congratulations. Thank you. We do have 19 employees at this point. So.
Fantastic.
That's 19 families I have to take care of.
Yeah. Commissioner Morris?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment. Really appreciate what you're doing for the, for the community and, and for your employees. Having a similar experience in, in Mojave Valley with, with a business. And one of the biggest problems they've been having are they're just too busy for their own size. There's parking everywhere. They're, they're obscuring the, the neighbors' parking, whatnot. So be sensitive, if you, if you could, to that situation. I noticed one of the letters, or one of the letters we got was, you know, relating to parking on other people's properties and, and stuff by your employees or whatnot. So that's, that's my only comment.
So our two neighbors directly across from us, a lot of times they're in and out, in and out of the area, and they're elderly. To where they actually let us park our personal vehicles in front of their house so that their house stays busy. So when they're not home, that the elderly, it feels like the elderly people have people there and their houses aren't. Because we have, in that area, we have a lot of foot traffic that runs through everybody's stuff. To where when our vehicles are parked there, it seems like the houses are always busy to where they're not being messed with. So our neighbors actually like that part of it, the two directly in front of our shop. Since, I didn't understand the process of how long it was going to take for me to get my other four acres fenced in. We actually since then rented a half acre down the street from Craft Works Fence to start moving stuff over there. So it's not so busy so that we don't look so busy. Also constantly trying to stay on top of my guys to make sure that we're parking behind the telephone pole so that the vehicles aren't sticking out so far towards the street so it does not obstruct any view for people too. So it's not easy because of the size of the stuff, some of, you know, some of the things that we deal with, but I'm on top of it every single day. Actually just purchased a second home that can store my motorhome so that I can get that out of there and clean that up. So it's an ongoing, ongoing process. I guess if I had, you know, 10 million, that'd build me a 40,000 square shop and we'd probably outgrow that too. So I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one member of the public signed up to speak, Sharon Haley. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. My name's Sharon Haley. I live at 4335 North Arizona Street. I think the main reason I'm against this rezoning to the open lot storage is because on this street, you have on the east side, commercial, and there's small mom and pop businesses. There's like two or three employees. And they have privacy fences. And when I bought here five years ago, I thought it was nice. I mean, they would, you know, there's a little traffic. But then at five o'clock, they close down. Weekends, they're gone. You know, there's a, a little repair shop too. But this is semi trucks. This is big equipment. He's loading and unloading on the street. And on the west side, we're residential. There's kids playing in the yard 10 feet away from these trucks. Sometimes you can't even drive on the road because the equipment is all there, loading and unloading and parked and stopped. And it's just, I understand his business has grown fast, but when we can't even get into our houses because of his equipment on the public right of way, I think he's overgrown the area. This is something that maybe needs to be out on Andy Devine or something. In a, I think if we give him this commercial open lot storage, it's just going to make more of a mess. I understand he's trying to clean it up, but it's only because he was in violation that he's making some changes now. I just don't feel that residential and open lot, commercial manufacturing is a good mix for that area with children going to school there, kids playing in the front yard. His operation on the public right of way.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. Come back to the podium, please.
So Sharon made the comment that I'm only doing this because I'm in violation. I didn't know I was in violation. And I purchased my four acres before I even knew anything about being in violation of anything. So my whole intent of getting the tow trucks out of there was in, was in process before I even knew about this. So I'd already talked to Craft Works Fence, already had it set up before we even rezoned while I was purchasing the property. Craft Works Fence was on board to start fencing off for me. We had full intentions of getting everything out of there to where we, to do a good, effective, smooth job for customers and for people to come to you anyways to, to bring their stuff to you. They don't want to see a mess. They want to see a good, clean shop. And as busy as we are, our shops are, we get compliments all the time for how inside the shops are still well maintained and cleaned. We just have a little bit bigger equipment parked in front of our shop that makes us look busier than some of the other smaller places. The other thing is, yes, there are times where we do block the road just a little bit. But there are other businesses that she says they're a mom and pop on that shop, on that street, you know, you got Family Dollar. You go Family Dollar, they get daily load drop offs. Their semi truck on a daily basis has to block the road. Nobody complains about it. We just move around it, wave to them. You got U-Haul. All of U-Haul's equipment is parked right on the side of the road. People come by there to hook up to the U-Haul trailer that they're renting or a Dolly or something like that, they have to block the road. We just slow up a little bit, wait for them to get done, wave and drive past them. So I am aware that we are blocking some of the road, but we're doing everything that we can so that that doesn't happen. I guess, I guess that's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll open it up to the commission for other discussion or comments. I guess I would just like to point out, if you look at the zoning map, there is a pretty good mix of commercial uses here, including other CMO properties, both on Arizona Street and Bank Street, as well as C2H and CRE. So.
Well, I have a comment. The way I see it, this is commercial. There's a lot of businesses there. There's also residential nearby. So it's hard to not allow this man to do what he's doing. And it looks like he's blocks it for a few minutes while he's loading and unloads something. And from what I know, he doesn't leave a truck parked out there that blocks the street totally. There's someone in the truck while they're doing something. So I have no problem. I think it's, I think I'd feel the same way as a resident. They're making all this noise and this and there, but they've got the right to do what they're doing. So I would make a motion to approve for staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner Abbott. I have a motion by Commissioner Abbott.
I'll second.
A second by Commissioner Walker. Other discussion or comments on this item? Hearing none, well, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Item number seven.
Item number seven is evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor Parcel Number 31013041 from an AR 10A agricultural residential 10 acre minimum lot size zone to an AR 3A agricultural residential 3 acre minimum lot size and an AR, an AR agricultural residential zone to allow for a minor land division in the Kingman vicinity. The applicant is seeking to split the property into five parcels as shown in Exhibit A. Two of the parcels will front US Route 66 with the other three parcels being located toward the rear of the existing parcel accessed by a new proposed roadway and easement. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. Is the applicant present on this item? No, we don't have anybody signed up to speak on this. Commissioners, any comments, questions?
Again, I hate to be, but I had a question for staff. From wanting, reading all this, and I don't see it right this minute, but he wants five parcels. And five into 11 is two acres something. And you're allowing him to do that, but he has to have a minimum of three acres, is that right, per partial? That's 15 acres.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Abbott, he's, he's applying for a rezone for an AR 3A and just an AR zone. So there's two different zones that he's applying for. One would have 3A and the other one would just be 1A. Our AR zone is a one acre minimum lot size. The parcels to the, that front along the Highway 66 would be with the one acre and lot size. And there's another one that's just behind one of those parcels that would also be a one acre. Then he has two that would be a four acre parcel and a three acre parcel. And so those are the two that are being rezoned to 3A. And the other, the other three are, are being rezoned to just AR, if that makes sense.
What does this say in our information he's asking for? And I, I believe you and I, I trust what you're doing here. Where does the one acre come in? Because it says you're zoned to an AR 3 agricultural residential.
And then the next, the next line says, and an AR.
That's one acre? Missed that. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Any other comments, questions on this? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve per staff recommendations.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Walker and a second by Commissioner Jacks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That's the last item on our agenda today. I will entertain a motion to, or any other reports or comments from staff or commissioners? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Stand adjourned. Thank you.